Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome the people of the City Council meeting on April the 11th. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our prayer given by Mr. John Johnson. And the next standing for his place, give him back what he can now.
Dear Lord, we come to you with volunteer and home. It was the knowledge and the know-how to make one decision that would help all of the city of Tupelo to spend their time with us.
Good man.
We have the Boy Scouts with us tonight. They're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Scott. We really appreciate that. At this point in time, I'm calling it's meeting for order. Can the last of our highest present man for the confirmation or amendment to the agenda on the agenda order?
Mister President, make a motion that we confirm and that we amend the agenda by adding number twenty-one in the matter of appointment of Commissioner to the Tupelo Housing Authority Board and delete number eleven in the matter of review approved appointment of Tommy Scott to the Tupelo Movement Therapy Committee.
We have a motion while we have Brown and second by Travis Beard, all in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. You'll now go to confirmations, record missions, and reports of agenda, beginning with confirmations.
We do. Junior Auxiliary. Oh, we did our vote please. This is the National Junior Auxiliary League Proclamation, whereas the Junior Auxiliary of Tupelo Mississippi, a chapter of the eighty-seven-year-old National Association of Junior Auxiliary Incorporated, represents a serious endeavor on the part of women to be active and constructive participants in the community and to assume responsibility, responsible leadership in meeting community needs. And whereas the mission of the National Association of Junior Auxiliary Incorporated is to encourage member chapters to render charitable services which are beneficial on the general public, which particular emphasis on children and to cooperate with other form sessions performing similar programs. And whereas the Junior Auxiliary of Tupelo Mississippi works actively to inform the mission of the National Association of Junior Auxiliary Incorporated in this community since nineteen fifty-one, and we appreciate this effort. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that I, I Jordan, Mayor of the City of Tupelo Mississippi, due to hereby designate the week, April third through ninth, two thousand twenty-two, that Junior Auxiliary win.
I really have any more?
No, this is it.
Okay. We're now going to record mission, uh, the voice of the office.
All right, this is Boy Scouts, True Claws, sponsored by First United Methodist Church, and our mayor's ass, counselor, and assistant scout master at Tupelo, assistant scout master of Sandbag New, mayor's address of citizenship, citizenship in the community and communications. Scouts name, uh, we have Rexson Johnson, here in the fourth. This branch is Addis and Hakey Johnson, Isaiah Barber, Daniel Barber, and Jordan Ware, branch of Jane and Christina Ware. Thank you, not nice.
Thank you very much, Ellen. Uh, people, we don't have any more scouts, all right? We're now going to the employee recognition.
All right, Joshua Miller. It is with sincere appreciation the City of Tupelo recognizing Joshua Miller for five years dedicated employment of Tupelo Police Department. All right, next one is Corey Lenz, and our new fire chief, uh, we have Eric Whitman. With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Corey Lenz for ten years dedicated employment for Tupelo Fire Department. God bless. With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Don Lewis, now COO with twenty-five years of dedication.
Good evening to all of you tonight. I would like to invite you to a very prestigious festival that we will be having in the City of Tupelo on April the twenty-third, the Community Fire Festival. This is something that I initiated with the support of the community and the police department. And instead of us having a fall this year, we're going to have this spring, it's a spring instead of fall. But it's a real big festival that's been very successful, and the purpose of it is to, uh, have a develop a good relationship with the law enforcement office and the community that has been very successful. So we'd like to invite you to come to this at the Garden Tree Fall on April the twenty-third. We have a parade and then the festival. And anybody who would like to do volunteer work, we're going to have our first meeting with the volunteers tomorrow evening at five o'clock at the community room at the police department.
Thank you, Mr. David Travis.
Yeah, I see. I see a couple of people from Word seven here. I see the top of that receipt award last month on the Tupelo Police Department. Thank you for your work and hey, Nathan. Also, Miss Tiffany Gilant and President Pam Gilant in August. Thank you, Miss Tiffany, for your contribution to get a couple of these.
Got it? Yes. This time we'll go to you, Mayor, Mayor Marion.
First off, I want to, again, introduce our new fire chief, Kelly Elliot. Kelly got sworn in yesterday on the fourth of service. Busy weekend this weekend. Got a concert, five nights. The guys are kind of still, I think we have eight and three baseball games coming in for the weekend, so if you're out, if you're in rotation, we'll be crowded this weekend. Last Saturday morning, we had runs for you, bud. We told you, cancel awareness, it was very good turnout, about a hundred and seventy runners down here in Fair Park. Obviously, quick deal Saturday, we had our tenth Tupelo cleanup. We picked up forty-five hundred pounds of trash, over six hundred fifty volunteers in City of Tupelo, so I appreciate everybody who's involved.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mister Chan.
Yes.
I feel a little bit, but I'd like for the community to be in prayer for us as we travel to Oklahoma City, Oklahoma next week, to be busy cities to get new ideas for our community. And, uh, and the superiors, the administration, and the, uh, some several of the councilmen will be leading on the level to Oklahoma City. So we get prayer for us that we have successful trips and a lot of things that we could utilize in our city.
Could I ask a question? Is Don Lewis still with you?
Yes, so you know this is going to be.
Very familiar. Thank you, Daddy. At this time, we're closing the record meeting over the public agenda, beginning with public hearings. At this time, the public hearings will begin in the matter of the consideration management of the welcome come to address Mississippi Medical Campus Act, Senate Bill Twenty-Ninety-Five. So really have anyone like to state to this? All you have to do is raise your hand, come up and state your line. Last chance. Okay, we don't have anyone to state that, so we're going down to a field which we do not have any. We don't have a citizens hearing tonight, really, as we don't. We're now close to public attendance, open the record session, and beginning with the action agenda, item number two, in the matter of ordinance demanding the welcome come to address Mississippi Medical Campus Act, Senate Bill Twenty-Ninety-Five, from the study agenda on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-third, seven days. We have a motion by Lynn and a second by Travis. Karen, do you want to address any of this, or just will it start from there?
We have discussed it, and our council would like to do a very thing in line.
Do you want to address it this time, Council?
Yes, we have one small additions to the, to the ordinance that we issued yesterday. We have elected to put in the permit of medical cannabis establishment permits. They won't be kind of on this type of amount, but they would be similar to a, this might be a permit, we already have a lot of other parts and services or things of that nature, but to, it will be a follow-up strategy that we will establish for using the application process of them, and of course, just like any business establishment, they have to get an extra device and see your building permit and go downstairs and get the privileges. It's going to be a little advanced as far as looking at these things, and so there would be an application, a permit, and that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions, Council? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous, thank you. We'll now go to the routine agenda. Item number three, in the matter of council minutes, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
How would they approve the manning supplies to that?
Item motion by Miss Douglas, a second by Miss Rosie Jones, all in favor. That's unanimous, thank you. Item number four, in the matter of bill pay. A motion by Miss Rosie Jones, a second by Travis Beard. Tonight, we have Ms. Janet M, Travis Beard, Ms. Nettie Davis, I helped a little bit. We were under the watchful eye of Jennifer Schumpert and Johnny Thomas. We do have a motion, second, all in favor of Penbill. That's unanimous, thank you very much. Item number five, in the matter of advertising and promotional items, moving to approve the advertising and promotional items. We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Miss Jones. Those items are Lee County Courier, a hundred and twenty dollars for best Lee County of election, best mayor in Lee County. And we have one, a major expenditure of twenty-one, twenty-one hundred and fifty-four dollars for the aquatic center at county. I can attest that I've done this work, the aquatic center is a lot of remember. We have a motion, a second, all in favor. Item number six, in the matter of the City of Tupelo, audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Any other? Have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Lynn Brown. Kim, do you want to address that?
I would like to. Uh, they read general, general review yesterday, and they had to receive one hundred and fifty-page document that he had released to us. I think they may take away, because we had a unmarked opinion, which is the best opinion they can have, and unless there are any questions, pretty much it is in a nutshell.
Any questions for Kim? And I think I can assure everybody that the council may create every page of that. All right, so we do have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous, thank you so much. Number seven, item number seven, would be in the matter of approval of submission of Raze's plant, and Raze is an acronym for rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity.
Seven.
Sorry.
Lynn Brown, second by Karen, yes. Seven.
Good evening. Tonight I would seek your approval to submit this Raze's plant, but it is due March the fourteenth. This is granted by the Department of Transportation. Under this funding, we will use this funding to pursue engineering and planning for three railroad projects in the City of Tupelo. Those projects, so it's very rudely, one is a bridge over Eastern Boulevard, which is retired, to allow traffic flow when the train, because the S train is actually doing on that track. And then the other two would be relocation of our switch yard, and that would be to west of forty-five, south of Fish Hattery, north of East End, in that area. It would allow the train to continue moving through Crossham, it would stop and back up, and continue with traffic flow, which is what we want. The third would be the implementation of for new quiet some intersections with the train, so it's allow the train to go through the capital more. So this, again, is not for construction or planning purposes, engineering purposes, and the match is likely zero, but it can go up to twenty percent, and awards will be early fall, this is August time, rain, September, so. Any other questions?
Sure, hope to get that, I think it's, uh, absolutely. We do have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous, thank you. Item number eight, in the matter of approval of thinking committee minutes of March seventh and March twenty-first, seven days. We have a motion by Jan Brown, a second by Rosie Jones.
Yes, tonight, I'm asking the council to approve the planning committee that is from March seventh and March twenty-first. I just want to give the public here to settle for the cannabis, which is a few amendments that she goes on. Also, the planning committee voted to approve, there is only fifty-five acres of, of, excuse me, from MBR to LBR, of all, with approval of development plan for public parkage two. That's submitted, those approvals are contingent on MDQ approval down on that property, so we're still waiting for MDQ approval later, so we want to receive that, to break those items to.
Any questions for that? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous. Item number nine, in the matter of demolition resolution. A motion by Miss Douglas, a second by Travis Beard. Karen.
Mister President, I'm asking the council to approve this resolution to allow the lien to be placed on the floor eleven eighty-three, since previously the office to apply the house was on the property and the deal, it's not being paid, so we're asking you to approve the placement of the property so that in the future sale will cease to be reimbursed for this.
Any questions? All in favor? That's unanimous. Uh, item number eleven has been deleted. Uh, council, I have a chance to address my question. In a matter of review and or approve, joint matter with design, review committee, number two.
Second.
A motion by Lynn Brown, a, of, Judge Desmond, a second by Judge Nelson.
Yes, the jointer neighborhood association, the whole collection here, to elect members of their overlay review committee, uh, this review, uh, review construction for, for the construction, that's why we're in neighborhood. And so, as they're, uh, reset, neighborhood association, we need to say, like, would be very careful, care, and need a member of the council, and then they allow, Captain Murphy, well, then, we're, you know, member and mayor to, so, we're asking the council to approve, to remember, they elected Mr. Perry, he'll need to come sponsor, and to approve Captain Brown, and Jack Kirby, and Mayor Jordan's, the woman, and Janet.
Any questions for Karen? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous. Item eleven has been deleted. We'll go to item twelve, in a matter of review slash approve appointment of George Jones to the Maker Thoroughfare Commission.
How would they approve this appointment?
Second. We have a motion by Miss Nettie Davis, a second by Miss Travis Beard. Karen.
Yes, Mister President, we're asking that the council approve the appointment of George Jones, the Maker Thoroughfare Committee, the representing board. Miss Nettie suggested Mr. Jones as the representative for board. George Jones was here last night, and the council had an opportunity to meet him, but he is the owner and president of her here golf services, graduate from Mississippi State University and Tennessee State University. He's married to Lori Jones, who is the manager, Cleveland Steel Tree, the bookstore, and father of four, three children, current in Tupelo, so that's to be approved.
Any comments?
I would like to say that you just have to have Mr. Jones, who began serving, um, Thoroughfare community, um, he lives in, um, his, his county, in the case, in, uh, Ward Coors, right at the edge of, um, Howard Surbar and Jackson Street, right in the area where he just completed the beautiful project that you have seen, um, on Jackson Street. And he has come to us from Nashville, Tennessee, where they have a lot of excellent community projects that you've been involved in, so we just have to have him come over to give support to the Thoroughfare community.
Thank you for saying that. Any other comments? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous, thank you. Item number thirteen, in the matter of surfacing weapon or target. I notice we approved, uh, surfacing the weapon or sex. A motion by Travis Beard, a second by Lynn Brown, chief.
Yes, good evening. On April twenty-second, Captain Jerry Samper will be retired from the Tupelo Police Department after twenty-seven years. It is customary at the Tupelo Police Department to allow a retiring officer to purchase his service weapon for one dollar. It's also allowed by state statute. We're asking that this weapon be surplus, and it can be sold to Captain Samper for one dollar.
Any comments? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous. Item fourteen, in the matter of agreement with Power DMS.
Yes, I'm asking you.
We need, we need, it's an inter motion.
That's okay. I jumped in. I'm sorry. We have a motion by, I'm going to re-improve it. And as of that, we have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Miss Nettie Davis. Yeah, I'm still holding. I am asking you to allow us to enter a agreement with Power DMS. We have Power DMS as a software where we can use to build our policy, and also the document management, the training management, and it also provides a full term of software. The current policy software we have now, that contract expires, it is out of date. Nobody uses it in the state of Mississippi, nor is it not very effective. Power DMS is a Cadillac version of policy software. What I really like about it, it's going to give me the ability to post a link on the City of Tupelo website, and anybody who doesn't understand it, come home and look at our policy. So it's part of the transparency that I want to bring to the floor.
Any comments? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. Thank you, chief, thank you. Yes, sir. Item number fifteen, in the matter of airproof, whole barn, here, whole barn materials on. Item number fifteen, in the matter of airproof, whole barn materials on. That's here.
Second.
Janet M made the motion, Travis Beard, second.
Sir, this request must be by whole barn. Um, we have two dinners as a birthday, and ninety miles was the one we set down.
Any comments? Second. We have a motion, a second, all in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you, Chuck. Item number sixteen, in the matter of fire morrow contract for Fair Park Restaurant, seven days. We have a motion by Lynn Brown, a second, uh, Chad Taylor. Neil.
This is a contract for the, uh, our taking engineering services to design the best arena that we have here in Fair Park, next to the playground, that's a part of our master plan, and, uh, found there, moving towards one of the projects, so we're just asking you to approve this contract.
I can say it's around here, in the other comments for that.
I'd like to add, uh, on this, this bathroom, where it's being served, on my personal time, I had a month.
We haven't got, yes, in the states, we haven't got into the exact drawings, but what we are, in case we didn't, the concept is we would like individual rooms, so our plan right now is to have a men's room, a women's room, and then two family restrooms where it's just individual use.
Any more questions? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. Thank you, Mayor. Item seventeen, in the matter of approval of back up South of DMS on February twenty-eighth. We have a motion by Travis Beard, we have a second by Miss Janet. I will step back there again. All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you very much. Item number eighteen, in the matter of air award twenty twenty-two, as General Love, W L, for twenty twenty-three, Calvin Chastain, Board of Call.
How would they approve, uh, to be at, uh, two and a half, uh, 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 uh.
Second.
A motion by Miss Nettie, a second, uh, Travis, Johnny Jones.
You'll probably remember back in the voting process, you approved to be a purchase of eighty-five foot I-Ranger, but the truck, this is between the first phase of that, this will be Calvin Chastain, please, and I'll be coming back to you with the deal on the air in the last day. I recommend to you tag truck center to a hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Any questions? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. Unanimous, congratulations. Item number nineteen, in the matter of approval of T R eight minutes of March twenty twenty-two. A motion by Dennis Gass, a second by Miss Rosie Jones, all in favor. Item number twenty, in the matter of acceptance of donation for dedication of street from Bank of New Orleans, being a located in McColl Center Commercial Settlement, seven days. Second.
Second.
That's motion by Ann Brown, a second by Travis Beard. Ben.
Uh, this is the, uh, street that connects from Coco Park to, uh, Coles Road, that goes behind the, uh, bank there, and the, uh, fire station, and the jail station. And, uh, that, uh, the bank has, uh, expressed interest, begging that to us for dedication in the city street, all apartments that are affected by it, have expected it, and are in perfect, uh, in really good, excellent shape, and, uh, ready to take it up to city limits.
We have discussed this report, do you have any questions, Council? We do have a motion, a second, all in favor? As you know. We're now going to item number twenty, one, in the matter of appointment of commissioner to Tupelo House Employee.
I believe that we, uh, extend this appointment.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Nanny Davis, a second, by Ann Brown. We'd like to speak to that.
Uh, I, I would, uh, this is a very important, uh, committee, it's, uh, the board that gives the house authority.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think, uh, this, uh, person would replace somebody that's been serving on that for quite some time. I feel that it's very important for people to understand, the people reside in their community and that need, so, uh, I think he would, uh, be able to provide that service as a board, you know, with them.
You mentioned Jason Martin being that person, I think you attacked it wrong.
Any, I'm sorry, any, yes.
Any questions or comments about that? We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Thank you very much. We'll now close the record session, and go through the study agenda, which we do not have any items. I now entertain a motion to determine immediate suspension session.
Second.
Motion by Travis Beard, a second by Chad M, Council.
Yes, uh, development services, uh, that are, uh, products and activities to acquire some properties in the City of Tupelo, and that is appropriate, uh, item in executive session.
All in favor of the motion? As you know, I'm now, I entertain a motion to go in, so. A motion by Ann Brown, a second, by Ms. Janet.
I, I was gonna.
All in favor? As you know, we're now in excited session.